Okay.
I guess you want to vote for something, just give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. There you go. Feels very Gladiator-esque. So I will point out, just for everybody's sake, that we are being livestreamed by the Suffolk County Public Meetings website on YouTube. Just so that you're informed of it. Which is great, more people watch. The last time I livestreamed it, I think there were more people that watched it than that were in the room, so. And interestingly, my side note, I was, had the benefit of participating in that repeal gun, the gun free repeal zone, whatever, repeal the gun free zone. One of the points I brought up is, well, more people attend digitally now because they just don't want to come to a public meeting or something like that. And that stopped the whole conversation right. And we all know how Zoom meetings go. Anyhow, let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we are going to, our next motion will be a motion to accept or amend the agenda. First motion I'd actually like to have is a motion to allow Councilman Loftus to participate electronically. FYI, Councilman Loftus is having staffing problems at Red Clop, so he probably will be attending digitally a little bit more during the summer season. This is information. So moved. Second, it's been moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Voice, to allow Councilman Swafford, Councilman Loftus to participate electronically. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries four zero. Councilman, do you have your voice yet, or are you just going to be voting thumbs up or thumbs down? It's a thumbs up, thumbs down. All right. I guess you could type something in the chat if you needed to. Stop, don't spend that money.
I'm really.
You can bring any ideas.
Don't. All right. So, next item is going to be the agenda. We do need to amend the agenda just to have a visiting delegation D two, which will be Suffolk County Hospital District, referred to by Tommy and Greg. Come, we forgot to get that on there, sorry. We knew you were coming, but it just slipped. And I think those are the only amendments to the agenda, so if I can have a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda, or amend the agenda, to add a D two for the Suffolk County Hospital District, under visiting delegations.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Loftus, uh, Swafford, second by Councilwoman Casiba, to approve the amended agenda, including D two for the hospital district's presentation. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. I gotta remember to look at the corner of my eye now to type things. Thumbs up. Yes, if he says thumbs down and I'm not paying attention, you can let me know. All right, and if he starts going like this, get my back. All right. Next item on the agenda is of minutes of June ninth.
I move that we approve the minutes from June nine, 2025, regular town council meeting.
Second. Move by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilwoman Casiba, to approve the minutes of June ninth, 2025, regular town council meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, you are here, oh, you've done one, I suspect. It's good. You have a guest in the lobby. I don't normally look at the screen, but I'm going to be looking at the screen a whole lot. Greg's joining. Isn't this you? Greg, Greg. Yeah, you're, you're online as well? Oh, okay. Cause you're kind of sweet, I was like, wow, he's going to participate there. Answer. Okay. This'll be fun. All right, next item is citizen concerns. Max?
Welcome back.
Any other citizen concerns? Yeah, I don't know what she has. All right, any council concerns?
I have one.
Good.
This, someone involved the sheriff's department as well. So on Saturday, we found a stray kitten in our backyard. And so, knowing that our municipal officer was off and Happy Endings cannot accept strays prior to the five day waiting period, I called dispatch and then got a call back from a deputy who let me know that the county could not take strays. And so we ended up in this weird position where Happy Endings wasn't, couldn't take the stray, Michelle was not working, and then the county could not take the stray. And so I followed up today with a member of the Happy Endings Board, and they expressed a hope that we could potentially create a better process, particularly on the weekends, because municipal officer isn't there, Miles is not probably working on the weekends as well, and then Happy Endings is a volunteer board. So Happy Ending.
The answer to that, actually, not to cut you off, is I think a deputy could have gotten that, couldn't have gotten that cat and taken it, because we have an MOU with the sheriff's department that the animals are.
Okay.
So that's already in agreed upons.
That was my understanding.
So they, a deputy could have come and grabbed it, brought it to our shelter and then just put it in the cage with the other cats.
Okay.
Happy Endings has nothing to do with strays, the county actually stores their animals with us, so.
Okay. Yeah, it ended up being a day long saga. Michelle ended up coming in from out of town to pick up the animal and get it into the pounds. So it's, it's fine now, but the Happy Endings did express to me that there has been confusion, mostly with the public, about who to call on the weekends, because our municipal officer is not working typically on the weekends. And she expressed the need or desire to have kind of consistent messaging among the three parties about, if it's a Saturday and we find a spare dog, a stray dog or a cat, who do we call? And then is that being consistently applied across the board?
Give me a call next time.
Give you a call.
Me. Yeah, that's kind of my function.
Oh, okay.
Also, you know, let's get, I don't think the sheriff's department can do that, so if something, if somebody wasn't answering, we should have dealt with it, so.
Good to know.
Just the way. And I have, you can just go down there, throw a cat in there. Now, if it was a scum.
It was a really, it was a really cute cat.
I know.
I started to keep, keep my wife from keeping it.
I have five orange cats, and people are like, did you lose one of your kittens? Nope, I got five of mine. Probably the same father. So I am correct in the reading of that MOU? Okay. Excellent. I mean, obviously, the sheriff's department doesn't want to be doing animal control.
I fully understand.
You know?
Depends on our calls for service.
Right, exactly. So to be clear, sometimes taking care of baby little kittens may not be the case.
Totally understand, totally understand that as well. Yep.
They're adorable. All right, any other council concerns? I would ask Dean, but you'd have to type it out, sign language, but, okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is visiting delegation. Sheriff Lear, welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So, big thing, again, vandalism at the Boy's Skater Park, restroom, the scanners, they disabled the smoke detectors, there weren't any fires this time, but unsure, unsure why and unsure who. For the law enforcement report, month of May, a few more calls for service. And to go along with something latter in the agenda, the, uh, there misses with pedestrians in the crosswalks, so with the increased traffic from visitors and everything else. Thank you for, or I guess, thank you for the state for painting the, the crosswalks. So that did help, because they were starting to get pretty faded where you couldn't even tell there were crosswalks anymore, so that was, that was key. The only other things, working with the town and with the rendezvous pageant people for the rendezvous parade, and just getting ready for, for the July activities, rendezvous, the stall competition in August. Yeah, it's usually from May to August, it's something every weekend, so, yeah.
I'm telling you, my ideas are good ideas. And I decided e-bikes would be the solution. I just need to get some like mobile, like municipal officers that can chase down people on Pine Street. Segways, I'm telling you. Huh? I'm telling you, I've got a solution here. It's gonna, and I feel like when the sheriff brings up Pine Street endangered pedestrians, it's just preaching to the choir. Yeah, they're definitely not respecting the speed limit. And what scares me is when you have the larger trucks, like the semi trucks, or even the dump trucks, because their stopping distance is ridiculous. Yeah. And I don't know what else we can do. I mean, those signs are right there, stop for people on the crosswalks, and I'd start to take personally the mark, but.
We did not, I need to tell us this year, just to, I'm inspired, I don't know, and talk to, uh, two months ago, spaced it, if we wanted to try to renew that, I feel like it's a little late to try to renew that and get everything done, but.
Yeah, it's a shame. Those were helpful. But now we're going to miss them. So one year wait.
I know, yeah, we'll prove that we need some.
Uh, any questions for the sheriff?
Well, busy gets busy, thanks for what you do.
Yeah, exactly.
Cause I know rendezvous coming up, that's always July in general.
So my wife was just in Sweden these last two weeks, and in Sweden, they have these special devices that make a really high pitched sound, that I guess as you get older, your ears become less sensitive, and as you're younger, your ears are more sensitive. So in Sweden, they have like these devices that start making this really high pitched sound that only like younger people can hear, and they turn them on at 10 o'clock at night. I was wondering if we get to the. This is what they do, they turn them on, and then it's just like, young people don't want to hang out around there, because it's just not pleasant, and those of us who are age, age advanced, don't notice it.
How does the animal fly?
I don't know. That's a good question, yeah. I don't know, but Sweden.
Those devices go all night long?
Yeah, they just run for six hours, you know? I'm just thinking.
The dogs will be high alert.
I'm just gonna vote like Dean.
Well, let's, if the animals don't respond, you might like it. It's all right, thank you, Sheriff.
It's like deer whistles in cars.
Sweden does it, it's gotta be legit, right?
Yeah, totally.
All right. Greg and Tanya, come on up.
I didn't want to say something while, while you were preparing. Greg's going to handle the presentation, speaking about critical access hospitals, but I did just want to be here and offer gratitude to this council for their ongoing support of our project and our district, and your efforts to help us find a resolution with the county commission, so just wanted to say thanks.
You're welcome. We're there for you.
Yep, thank you. This is Sheriff Lear's third time through us, so he's gonna, you know, like, stop. There's a common question, you know, that comes up on the time that I've spent in your community, that how is it possible that we're going to be able to support a hospital? There's no way this is going to work. And so tonight, my goal is to help educate you, share with why a hospital at Pineville is possible, and why it will work, and that way when you get stopped at Ridley's, you can say, oh, no, but, and to the extent that I fail to do that, please ask questions. So, twenty year neighbors here in, uh, Suffolk County has been saying that a town or a community, less than 14,000 people cannot support a hospital. And so here is 533 hospitals that exist in counties with a population of less than 14,000. And it is possible because they are what's called a critical access hospital, and that's the funding mechanism for Medicare that Suffolk County Health intends to become. So that's not to say that there's not challenges and headwinds to rural health there. There's a lot of hospitals that are reducing services, disclosing services. It is a challenging time to run a hospital, and I'm not saying that it's going to be all sunshine and roses, it is challenging, but it is possible. And so our goal is to set up a process and make sure we design this hospital, so that when we do not end up as one of these headwinds. So when we say hospital, in the world of Medicare, as complicated as that is, there's actually three different types of hospitals. The first one is prospective payer system, and this is how Medicare pays hospitals. If we said hospital to you at any time, probably over the last year, up until five minutes ago, you would have thought, a hospital, you're thinking of a PPS hospital. This is any of your hospitals in Salt Lake City, Jackson, over in Utah, it's down in Rock Springs. These are all very commonly PPS hospitals, which operate just like every other business that you come in contact with. They serve a customer, they get paid. It's a direct one-to-one relationship, it's pretty simple, it's how all American business works. The second hospital is a critical access hospital, that's our goal to become, and this is a cost-based reimbursement. And so a portion of our expenses, Medicare will subsidize, and that breaks that link between number of patients and our reimbursement. The new kid on the block is an REH, or Rural Emergency Hospital, there's only a handful of them out there, they don't have any inpatient beds. It's kind of crazy the way they structured this. We have to open as a PPS hospital, and then convert to a critical access hospital. So in September, a month after we've been in operations, I'm going to report financials to the board that are awful, and I've been telling everyone this since I got here, we expect to lose money while we're PPS, we've been planning for it, it is known, and is why we have to convert to a critical access hospital as fast as possible. It would be a travesty if someone looked at our first months of financials, operating the hospital, and said, see, I told you so, because that's not our intent. So to be a critical access hospital, you have to be located in a rural area, provide 24/7 emergency care, no more than 25 beds, it doesn't mean you must have 25 beds, you can't have 26. And an average patient stay of 96 hours, average is just that, it doesn't mean when you hit your four day mark, we're kicking you out. So some folks will, will end up needing more care, will stay five or six days, other folks will be there for a day or two. I would guess that we'll probably average about a two and a half day length of stay. Okay, so this is the weirdest thing about healthcare, if we go into OBOs, all of us pay something different. Of course, we freak out if that were the case, but that is what happens when you go to any hospital in the country, and we refer to this as our payer mix. Everyone, some really smart people, including I Bailey, is guessing on what our payer mix will be. We don't know until we open the hospital and have patients walk in. A few months ago, the board approved our pricing, and at the time I told them, no one in the history of this hospital is going to pay that price, because everyone gets a discount, it's just a matter of how much. So for the purposes of this, the illustration, I just want to focus in on that Medicare percentage, whatever percentage Medicare is, that determines our subsidy that we get from Medicare. In here, I'm saying 50% because it's easy math for us, I Bailey thinks it's going to be closer to 75.
Can, Greg, is that, is that based on, I mean, Medicare is going to be primarily related to seniors, I suspect, correct?
Yep. Yeah, so they, they saw either our demographics of our likely service area, and what that population looks like, and they came up with 75% on the inpatient side, which is my example here, 56% on outpatient.
So once again, we're kind of building the future on the backs of those who are before us.
Okay. In order to figure out what we get paid, we have to add up all of our patient care costs. For us, this is just about everything that we do, excluding the work of Kerry DeWitt in our marketing department, so we cannot include our, our marketing. I think it was 1% for capital investments, not a lot of money, and that equals then 101% of the allowable total. Okay? The capex, kind of weird to think about, at some point, likely your grandkids will refer to this as the old hospital in the hill, and there'll be a new hospital, so we have to think about this one, that's brand spec and do today, wearing out. So we take whatever that total turns out to be, and we don't know until sometime in the future when we calculate this, and what was Medicare's percentage? So if it's 50%, like I just showed you, then they would pay us 50% of the 101%. Okay? Who remembers when this happened? Apparently, there's a Netflix special, I've done this presentation a bazillion times, one person has ever, do you remember what year it was?
I would say four years ago, was it?
No.
This was on the Costa Rica.
Yes.
Coast of Italy?
Concordia, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, off the coast of Italy.
Yeah.
Yep, there's a cruise ship, that was way back in 2012. So in 2012, we had.
Time flies, man.
President Obama was in the White House, I believe the Democrats controlled the Senate, the Republicans controlled the House, they couldn't agree on anything, had to pass a budget. So they came up with this idea that the Democrats gave up 2% from their preferred social programs, being Medicare Medicaid, the Republicans gave up 2% from their preferred spending program being the Department of Defense. Everyone hated it, no one liked it, and they said, you know what, there's going to be an election, we'll fix this, don't worry about it. And here we are, this many years later, and we still have this 2% reduction. 2019, we thought it was going to go to 4%, because the way the law was written, it automatically kicks in, then with the COVID bills, they say, wait, 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 we're not going to do that to ourselves, and they, they kept it at the 2%. In the one big beautiful bill, as it is presented by the House, this will go to 4%. And so we take off 2% for sequestration, which then gives us 99% of our cost. I bring this up, if you're ever speaking to any of our politicians, please ask them to exclude rural hospitals from the sequestration, it's my preferred special interest group, so. So ultimately, we get 99% of our allowable cost. This is a screenshot of a critical access hospital right here in Wyoming, sequestration cost them $126,000, you can do the math, if that gets doubled, that is real money that we can do something with, so it doesn't sound like a lot, but it actually can add up pretty quickly. So the strategic puzzle for us is to preserve our cash and build our working capital, we have to spend cash to design our cost model, keeping in mind that we're reimbursed based on our expenses, and then we have to spend cash and capex to build out our service lines, and then really, really pay attention to that expected Medicare rate. This is where critical access hospitals get in trouble. Any questions? So if you ever can't think of a question, and my successor or anyone else is telling you this is the brilliant thing the hospitals should do, number one question you can ask is how will it impact the hospital? Can't think of anything else, just ask them that, okay?
So, how will it impact?
Now, you know, now, once we get a hospital open, that's where making those changes in service lines or changing anything about the hospital becomes really important to ask that question.
So the cuts in the bill that you mentioned, which we all probably in this room are aware of, most likely, have you guys gamed that out as far as like, you know it's only going to be the 2%? Or is there a second sequestration I think they can trigger, depending on the cut?
Right, so right now, as, with the version the House passed, it'll go to 4%.
Okay, so that's definitely going to change, though.
Yeah.
But have you guys gamed out, hopefully, some, well, I guess you just don't know.
Yeah, we don't, yeah. Yeah, that's, I try not to worry too much about it.
And the other thing I was going to ask was, why, or whose idea was it that, to open as a PPS and then move to a CIAH?
Required to.
Fair, again, who came up with that genius plan?
I got you, I got you, it's a good question. So back in 1997, when Congress wrote the, so a bunch of rural hospitals were closing, that's why they came up with critical access hospital, that concept, when they wrote the law, they never created a pathway that you could open as a critical access hospital. Today, the really silly thing they did, you can't open as a rural emergency hospital, so you will never open a new rural emergency hospital.
Have to open as a PPS.
PPS, convert the car, and then convert to a rural emergency hospital. It's crazy. And so it was the brilliant wisdom of Congress.
Probably somebody was sitting there saying, well, we want to make certain that they can't make it before we pay all the money through Medicare.
But that's really not in our process, so we're trying to convert as quickly as possible.
Right.
Question, could you operate as a PPS, is not part of the application, so.
I just feel like you could prove that pretty, yeah.
I, well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Cause it's not like you're, it's not like there's no healthcare, and then all of a sudden, there's a CIAH, you know what I mean? Like, there is, you guys have data, you have statistics, demographics, and so forth, like, I think you, in my head, it sure seems like you could make a case, and then a board would go, you're right, you should open as a critical access hospital. But save a month, I guess, with work, but, and bad PR, and bad PR, that's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
What's the process from going from PPS to a critical access hospital? Like, is there, is there some permissions or whatever that has to be?
There is, the hardest one is that we have to open our Medicare account with, as a PPS hospital. And so, once we open our doors, then we'll be accredited by CIHQ, they tell Medicare, hey, these guys know what they're doing, and then from there, we can start the process to open that account. We can't do anything until our account is open, and they give us that PPS number. At that moment, then we can, the first step is through the Office of Rural Services, it's a federally funded state office, and they, they will then start the application process. We're getting everything lined up, so that way, that can go as fast as possible, once we have that Medicare account. And we can't do anything until we have, we can't even bill, until we have that Medicare account. So.
Are there any risks, either in timeline, or like, I guess, the true approval for becoming a critical fact? Like, you're saying a month, but could it be three months?
No, no, I'm saying three months.
Oh, okay. It's one month after.
You have to have a month, have a month of data as a PPS.
Right.
And then you start the process, the clock.
Okay.
So, it's, the risk is that we run out of funding, that is the sincere rate.
Is there a risk that your, your approval to switch from a PPS to a critical access wouldn't be approved?
Highly unlikely, given the state of things. That would be pretty catastrophic, if they denied that, that approval. The bigger risk is in the time going through the bureaucracy for someone, and then Medicare in fairness hands it off to a for-profit entity, the way they manage, so there's a bunch of time passes that take place in order to get that Medicare account open.
Got it. So you guys have to start in the hole before anything good can happen.
Exactly.
Cool.
Yeah, yeah.
Good job, government.
So.
That's fixed and stopped. Yeah.
But risks aside, you can't really do anything else, right? This is, this is the path forward.
This is the path forward, and that's where we're lining up all of our applications, so that way the things we control can happen as fast as possible, so.
So how many months of reserve do you have, if the process went from three to six, for example?
Yeah, so right now, we're sitting on about seven months, is my forecast, so.
Okay, good job.
Yeah.
Twice as long, it seems.
Yeah, you beat me in the question I was going to ask, is, yeah, because today, in today's world, government things, as I deal with in my job, don't seem to go as planned very often, so, I think that's a fair statement.
Good. Makes sense? Then you're saying, Sheriff Lear? I say cheating back here.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that, thank you for coming. Let us know if you need anything.
Thanks for having us.
Of course.
We've, we've been on Team Hospital for quite some time.
I, it's very rare, it's much appreciated, and we have obstacles after obstacles after obstacles, and.
Yeah.
Much appreciated.
We appreciate what you're doing.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
All right, great, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. First item is the insurance, which is on the agenda, I think everybody has, am I right? Yes, okay. Yes.
Abe had one adjustment, I don't remember which contract.
Just when we get to budget.
Right, okay, cool, cool.
And then second item is the temporary use permit for the stall competition, August 14th through the 16th. Third is going to be the US Forest Service Bolt Water Agreement for the horse fire incident at the airport, as well as the gray water dumping, so let's see, four, three, four. E5, Metamedia Marketing Contract, then the Metamedia Y dot, or YOT, Office of Tourism Co-op Marketing Contract, Suffolk County Visitor Center Travel and Tourism Contract for Services, then the Liquid Sodas Act Agreement, and ARD Group Task Order 2501, and finally, the New Hangar Construction Grant Application, which we've all discussed. Is there anything in there that we want to discuss further, or is council prepared to vote on the consent? Fantastic, can I have a motion? I'm assuming that Dean, like, you gotta wave your. I'm assuming the dean wants to say, like, gotta wave your arm.
I was looking for motion. I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
Move by Councilman Swafford.
Oh, he can have it.
Councilman Loftus to approve the consent agenda as published. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. All right, next item on the agenda, are the new orders, or the new office, other companies. First up is the South GA Apron FAA Federal Funding Reorganization. I gotta get to that page. Okay, I'll go past it.
129.
120.
129.
Oh, nine.
I heard 120.
Sorry, I missed.
Great, thank you. All right, Abe, or Wes?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll do my best to explain this. My mind's getting a little lost in the shuffle, out of the airport. A lot of the shuffling was caused by the FAA needing kind of a reallocation this summer, but they ended up with more state apportionment and more, what's the better term I'm looking for? I, I put it in here, actually, so discretionary. There's two pools of federal money, there's state apportionment, there's discretionary funding, they got a reallocation increase both of those. That's what allowed us to get the rest of the South GA Apron paid for that we were originally gonna pull out of bill funds. We were hoping to be able to award a portion of that project, unfortunately, the timings in the FAA and their sequencing did not work out for that. But they have come to us to request that we modify our grant agreements to the maximum extent possible, reallocating 15% of state apportionment out of the project and moving discretionary funding in. If you need to spend their discretionary funding, this stays state apportionment funding for other projects, it makes that funding pool a little bit bigger. The long-term impacts to us is it helps us with our relationship with the FAA, and it maybe puts more in the pool that we give stuff funds. So it's us being a good teammate.
It's a no-brainer.
But they just requested a letter from the council indicating you guys were dealing for such. Wes, did I do okay?
Nope, I think you covered it pretty well. I would just echo, I've never seen them change the funding pots on a project so many times in my life, but I do appreciate that. We have federal partners working creatively to get this stuff done, so.
All right, any questions from council, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request to the FAA to reallocate grant funding associated with the South GA Apron Project, allowing for funding to be provided by FAA discretionary funds, preserving the FAA state apportionment fund up to the allowance of the federal provisions of the grant agreement.
All right, move by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Cosiba, to approve the request by the FAA to reallocate grant funding associated with South GA Apron Project from discretionary to, to be provided by discretionary, and improve the state apportionment funds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Dean. Second item is the subscription and service agreement with Granicus. The electronic permitting software and processing in the amount of 22,000 and an annual subscription of 12,000. Keep in mind that we did get a $20,000 grant from the NLC, which will contribute to this, so. Any questions? We are, I think, in the discussion, this, we got the grant partially because, you know, NLC was, we were, only 12 cities that got it. We were one of the 12, and looking for a way to help businesses and streamline the process, and that's the idea. And discussing with staff, you know, getting electronic permitting software, we're probably almost, I mean, free up at least a part-time employee by the number of stuff, and we're always gonna be there, so if somebody comes in and they can't fill it electronically, staff will always be there to help. It'll be the kind of thing that we can do, but this will allow people to see their progress on applications as well as to file faster. So this should streamline the whole process for everybody. So it's kind of a win, and Granicus already worked with us using the short-term rental software, so we already have an existing relationship with them. And based on the fact that we'll probably be replacing, not having to hire at least a part-time employee, or more, the subscription rate actually kind of pays for itself. Justification, if anybody has questions. When do you think we'll get it installed and started?
So the agreement will start on July 1st, as far as the annual subscription, they'll be going on the launching, but it's, they expect four months to build everything into a workplace system. So obviously, Chelsea is gonna be our bandwidth to help get that over the finish line, so we will try to push that along. We have, we kind of have goals of how we envision it, kind of getting the bones put up, and then taking some of our simpler permits and getting it built in there, and then kind of expanding and getting everything built out in the next four months. There's a couple areas that, I mean, just getting complete applications, let alone anything else, just getting complete applications, the way that this will link up to our GIS and bring in some of the hard data that people don't, you know, they can enter in their address, their CID and comes in, the tax ID comes in, and we can share that with the assessors office, like, a lot of that stuff's gonna be a lot simpler.
Excellent.
Paying in tracking progress. Bonds, tracking bonds.
I know you love that.
Tracking.
All right, and you've reviewed the contract, everything's good?
I've reviewed the contract format, I have no idea what it's going to do, but contract format's fine.
Legal opinion, I think we can sign this. All right, any further discussion?
I was gonna make a motion if, for good, okay. I move that we approve a subscription and services agreement with Granicus LLC for electronic permitting software and processing in the amount of $22,881.03 for the launch and annual subscription rate of $12,342.05.
Move by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Cosiba, to approve a subscription and services agreement with Granicus LLC for electronic permitting software and processing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five, zero. I hope they quote you on that interview we did, Chelsea. Next item is the 2025 Chip Seal Concurrent Award. Abe wants to make an addition here, our discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we did give bids back, so the county went out to bid, and they received bids, the alternate bid, which is Town of Pine Dale, which is the Bloomfield, is what we were planning on chip seal. Came in a little bit over budget of what we were planning in the current budget. We had planned for $350,000, the bid came in at $411,000. I've spoken with Mr. St. Baker from Reverta Engineering, and just the checks and engineering piece that we would also need to pay for, we expect the total cost to be right at $400,000, or $430,000, excuse me, compared to the $350,000 we have budgeted. If you guys concur in this award, we will need to amend the third grade of the budget later in the agenda to give us enough funds to pay for the project in 2020.
So staff spoke to me about this, and we've already cut our chip seal project in half, what we wanted to do, and I felt from the perspective of we'd better do something, I instructed staff to go ahead and agree with us and make the budget amendment, so. We don't, I mean, this is kind of what we talked about last time, rainy day fund is there for. And if we don't make capital improvements or just reparations, we're gonna fall further and further behind, and this is only gonna become more expensive, so. Anyhow, I'm grateful that we can do this in partnership with the county, so that helps make it a little bit cheaper. However, are there any questions from the council? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the Concurrent Award of Alternate Schedule of Town of Pine Dale for the 2025 Chip Seal Project as part of the MOU with Sublet County to HK Contractors in the amount not to exceed $411,140.
Move by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Swafford, to approve the Concurrent Award of Alternative Schedule of Pine Dale with 2025 Chip Seal Project. It's part of the MOU with Sublet County to HK Contractors in the amount not to exceed $411,140. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five, zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item is the Transportation Master Plan 2025, recommend the amendments. Yes, Abe, go for it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as you guys are aware, excited on the agenda is us discussing the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Application for pedestrian safety improvements along US 191 and Pine Street. The addendum here, Jordanson has worked alongside our staff to identify maybe some shortcomings of the current master plan in meeting the action plans for Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Application. So before you can go to implementation grant, you have to have an action plan, that's why we have the master plan. There was just a few little remains that were recommended that we kind of shore up. We've modified them a little bit, for the most part, just to go through the summations. One is Safe Streets and Roads for All as a consideration for equity considerations. In underserved communities, the Town of Pine Dale does not have any formal underserved communities, as defined by the federal government's tools. So we've identified that, but also identified our goal to provide infrastructure that allows full use across our communities. There's some small policy, like audit recommendations of how we kind of review our safety, is it working, are improvements working? We have added in there a closer coordination with the Sheriff's Office of tracking incidents, and maybe annually coming back, or this is how many incidents are happening, or these are the incidents that are maybe causing, so we can have somewhat of a checkback of what improvements we're making, are we actually improving safety or not? I know you have all the statistics, so we'll just have to annually keep an eye on if we're actually making a difference. So framework for some of the standards that it recommends that we proceed with, some of our urban design standards and street standards, that we will consider changing those, and then looking at kind of public reporting and transparency, making sure that any improvements are, that we're updating our, our master plan annually, making it available for people to view. If there is such time that we make changes, we're just having public meetings and public input.
Sounds like business as usual.
Yep.
Frankly.
Yep. Those are, that's kind of a summation, Brian, you helped write this, so I mean, that's my summary of pretty well.
So this will be the addendum to the master plan that we submit to Safe Streets.
Yes. Which all, it's all listed on the town website, so these are just all incorporated.
Okay. Any other comments?
Another question.
Yes.
Under the Policy Audit and Recommendation Section, number two requires developers include a traffic safety studies for new projects. What, what does that look like, and how does that add to the cost or the length of time it takes for them to get approved?
So when we start talking about developers, there, most of our developers already are requested to do a traffic impact study at the development stage anyway. So Mr. Moyes did one, Mr. Goodrich did one up there on under Resorts. So any major one, we actually do require anything that impacts the highway. The only thing that we would be specific about is probably adding, making sure of ADA. And this is stuff we kind of already do in our formal review of these subdivisions. We would just make sure that all of those codes and alignments are a little tighter, from the installation of stop signs, crosswalks, connectivity, making sure that's all correct. So I think we're 90% there now.
I was gonna say.
We just need a little tweak to be a little more detailed in some of the, maybe updating some of our standards of where we want stop signs, updating if there's any specifics we want on crosswalks or consistency across the Town of Pine Dale. We kind of just roll with what our engineers are bringing to us and we review it. I think a good step in this is actually, the other one as well, the design standards for roadways of kind of locking in some of these standards of where and how stop signs go, yield signs, speed limit signs, et cetera.
What's the threshold that a developer has to do the traffic impact study?
Typically, if it impacts Pine Street, so like significantly impacts Pine Street.
Oh, hold on, because strictly speaking, you wouldn't know that until you did your traffic impact study.
Yeah, I would say you're looking over about 10 lots.
Okay, I, I feel like that's a rule of thumb, like, you're doing three or four lots, we don't need a traffic impact study. Oh, you're doing 10 lots, we need traffic impact, that's why I was just wondering, because there's gotta be an idea there.
I'll say we didn't require one, Mr. Goodrich's, we did have the reasonable proportion discussing the number of trips and structure around it, a very slight kind of TIS, just little six, seven lots, there was really nothing that we were too worried about. If you were to develop, say, lot two, or three or four, where we're talking, I don't know, 50 homes, you'd understand whether you need to do it.
Would there be, would there be a concern of, I'm trying to think of the right word, I'm sorry, additive? So let's say, you know, you have a particular region in the town where somebody does four or five lots, and then a couple years later, somebody does four or five lots. At what point do we suddenly, oh, gosh, we need a traffic impact study, because we've just added 20 lots, and I'm just wondering if there's?
It's a challenging question, because transportation master plans are that way evenly, right?
Right.
It's one of my bigger gripes, I've talked to Brian about this, because I've done several traffic impact studies in Teton County with Jordanson when I worked with Jordanson. And a lot of times, you know, we get to 90, 95% capacity, and then the guy who tips the scale, all of a sudden's on a hook for a million dollars to fix it all.
I mean, is it?
It doesn't quite seem fair.
I mean, I hate to say it this way, I mean, you kind of, would it be worthwhile having as part of the thing? Like, as soon as somebody's developing more than two or three lots, that they contribute a certain amount towards a traffic impact study that gets saved someplace.
So Bloomfield is a perfect example, because they were required to do one in 2008, and Bloomfield, like, the TIS kind of falls apart, anyone can prove it anyway. So now it's like, yeah, we're new individual blocks, it's kind of challenging and frustrating. This is why we have a transportation master plan, where we identify these issues, and we identify improvements that when the highway goes through improvements, can get those investments done. But the right way, the best way to do it would be have a cumulative road test. This is what we know has to be done to get to the improvements, and as we use up a little bit of capacity, that developer is responsible for 30% of that fee, and so on and so forth, but you have to do that through development. These is the only way I know how to do it, and it's very challenging, and no one wants to pay it because they can't see it.
That's right.
Just something to be, as we look at our standards, I think that's worth looking at, of how it impacts the highway, how it impacts those improvements, and necessary to work in a safe and efficient way of shooting.
It's a strange debate, isn't it, because, you know, the guy that tips the scale screams bloody murder because it's not fair, and you sit there and you're like, sorry, you have to do a traffic impact study. Whereas if you had a system that was fairer, then everybody wins, but, yeah.
And it's expensive, I mean, we know how much.
And costs change, I mean, you may not do a traffic impact study for six years, and the, the cost of the traffic impact study that you planned in 2025 probably is not the same price in 2030. So how do you get that? I mean, I guess you could just say everybody contributes a certain amount, and then whatever's left over goes to the guy who tipped the scale, but I don't know, how do you?
The best thing to down can do is continue to promote the continuity of streets and complete transportation plan. So adopting roads that are your major thoroughwares, and then adopting productivity where there's multiple routes for people to go, so you don't overburden the single route. And that is required by the government, it hasn't been very good to enforce yet. The more consistent the town remains in that, the chances you have of not troubling your transportation infrastructure, so.
Yeah, Brian, you were gonna say something?
Well, to some degree, that's in the transportation master plans, the projections of the full build out of areas down at the market. You have to know, to help guide, you know, aid staff to, to.
Right.
We do know that we're gonna have to do a few improvements on, like, in the Bloomfield, right? So those are things that we're far enough away from developing, that's a real conversation that we have. If we know adding those turning lanes and those intersection improvements is gonna cost $250,000, there's a lot of acreage out there that that $250,000 could be divvied up across.
And I'm also thinking of the parcel south of town.
Yeah, so there's, but as far as building a local road, the developers are still responsible for building a collector or a local road or those kind of activities, and they're still putting that bill, we just gotta make sure that we're accounting all the aspects.
Is there anything within this that would limit, or, like, we get a lot of requests for variances that include things like backing out onto the street, or, you know, having to back across the sidewalk. Those are discussions that we've recently had. Is there anything with this that could make that clearer, or, I mean, we're kind of stuck with what we have at this point, and I feel like, I don't know, that it's good that we're constantly giving variances.
That's part of the problem. And that's, I mean, that's the challenge, right? You give variances because we live in a town amongst our neighbors, so you wanna be able to work with your neighbors and help them, but at the same time, you're kind of causing tomorrow's problem.
I'll say one of the problems that's not waived for anybody is the requirements that they install their sidewalks. For the last five years, I haven't seen you guys wait it at all, and you've had a lot of pushback at times on it. And making sure that there's somewhere safe for pedestrians to walk down the street while traffic is still going is a huge step in the right direction. And in fact, one of the reasons why we keep getting cat fawns and those types of things is because other parts of the community are investing in a complete street idea, so. Backing over sidewalks, we definitely want to stay away from that. If we can move sidewalks on the public easements, on the private property, those types of things, there's other ways to look about it where we can keep people from backing over sidewalks, because no one wants to do that. No, I mean, everybody, no one cares if they back.
Pretty much.
One person, you know, you're, and no one's gonna win the battle. It's not gonna be the stroller, it's not gonna be the person walking, it's gonna move on. And so it just happens to one person, and in today's society, they look at a check and tax, and they back over someone. Now they possibly go to prison for volunteering, you know, and we have to try to avoid those types of design criteria, so. Make people.
So next time we turn down the variance, we can just say, we're just trying to keep you out of jail.
Trying to keep people safe. Trying to keep from killing somebody, that's what we're trying to.
Jeremy, don't think I go over.
Thank you, federal traffic force, right?
I, you know, I mean, it's just, yeah. All right, thank you. So we need a motion to approve this addendum. Amendments.
I move that we approve amendments as presented to the Town of Pineville Transportation Master Plan to better align with the requirements of the action plan necessary for submittal of grants for federal funding.
Second. Moved by Councilman Swapper, second by Councilman Casiba, to approve the twenty twenty-five addendum to the Town of Pineville Transportation Master Plan prepared to twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries five zero. All right, next item on the agenda is the actual Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Program for, for all federal programs. Sorry, that threw me off. For all federal, no, for all. This is our grant request of four point one million dollars, with an eighty percent federal request and a twenty percent local match, which we're hoping will incorporate some state funding, but yet to be determined. Safely now. Are there any, well, Abe, go for it. I mean, you and I have talked about this.
Yeah, more of the benefit of the public who maybe hasn't been involved in thirty-five conversations on this item, just to summarize what we are requesting, the traffic mask, the transportation master plan has a, several, you know, twenty or thirty recommendations for improvements of our transportation network. With the town, as funding this grant application, is focused on our efforts in trying to combine forces with YDOT and the two thousand twenty-eight STIP project. And that would include pedestrian improvements along US Highway one ninety-one and Pine Street, the first being an underpass installed at Harbor Creek, connecting the pathway on the north side of the highway to the DPT fields, and having, so it might be an aggregate crossing, an underground crossing. The second piece of it is to strategically install ball bouts and drainage improvements within the downtown corridor, that is to improve site distance on side streets that enter Pine Street, while also making pedestrians more visible, and hopefully designed well so that snow climbing is not a major issue. It should also, it has been proven that those help to reduce speeds on the highway, as well as just in, you know, maintaining as much parking as we can in the downtown corridor. Instead of parking hazard, we can actually have parking spots where people can see by it and get across the street or onto the street. This is step one of probably, you know, I know, you know, there's, there's a fifty-fifty divide on do we want street lights or do we not want street lights, we ask the public. And right now, they're not warranted by YDOT, but this would include the geometrics of those intersections that they could possibly in the near term be warranted, so that turning those instances up are safer. The next part of it is ADA and sidewalk upgrades on Pine Creek Bridge, as well as a center pedestrian, we'll just call it a harboring location or a safe center island between American Region Park and the south side of the street, where we have a lot of traffic, or a lot of pedestrian traffic. And then improvements to our water lines and sewer lines that are located underneath the road, so that we don't build a brand new road and have to dig it up in five years. In fact, we're getting ready to dig it up right now. Leaking water service line, so this would replace all the service lines underneath Pine Street, as well as a couple of place sewer lines and some different things that we're aware of that need to be replaced during the STIP. Our goal is to combine this with the YDOT STIP, that they have a little over four million set aside, so that when Pine Street gets torn up, it gets torn up once, and hopefully there's a scale, scalability for project cost effectiveness. That is the project.
Excellent.
Which you're aware of, but.
Yeah.
The mayor may not.
That's right. Are there any questions, comments, or criticisms?
I have a suggestion. In the overview and vision section, the second paragraph you discuss, there have, fortunately, we have experienced no traffic fatalities to date, which is wonderful, but can we add something in there about how many close calls we have and how dangerous it is? Because that's a constant, and it's not like there hasn't ever been anybody hit, so if we could add that information.
This is an outline, each of these segments is going to roster, and Sheriff Lear has provided us the number of incidents there have been involving pedestrians, and I don't know if we have quite all of those calls, we can do a bit of a narrative on that, but.
I could, I could give them an idea, just.
In the summer, at least.
Oh, yeah. Several times.
Daily.
I was gonna say, maybe daily in the summer.
We have some great pictures that show the site distance issues that we're up against. We have, we have the speed graph that Sheriff Lear has been able to produce with kind of a YDOT study, but also some of the information to get off of the signs.
Give me body cam, I can give you body cam.
We have twelve pages to put all that in, and we'll make sure that we enhance it a bit, but this.
You have twelve pages, so you can make that like font eight or something like that.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments, criticisms?
I'm bummed that we're not putting the stakes back up on the bulbs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, how long does it take for that process to happen? Because, you know, if we, from the time to get approval to do it and then to get it done, it seems like it was a worthwhile thing.
Probably two to three days to paint, paint the asphalt, install the ballers is my guess, but I said that too loud, and Kevin would disagree. Last time.
Kevin's not watching.
Well, and you can double it for his sake, I still think it's worthwhile. I mean, we're just at the beginning of the summer. I don't think we have to say it can't happen.
See if YDOT would be supportive of it. I don't have a permit right now, like I have pasture, that's. And we're kind of coming up on that super busy, like, time, and if we don't get it in the next week or two, it's kind of hard to.
Cause you have.
Justify, you know.
We wouldn't be able to hit it. I don't think.
Speaking of, Fourth of July picnic is gonna be a lot of fun this year.
Is that actually on the board?
Yeah.
Because of what?
Well, we're gonna start it earlier, and then we're gonna have some games, and Chelsea's gonna do face painting.
I thought that was a shameless plug, but okay.
That's fine. No, we are, but anyhow, just, I point out, it's.
The only thing I would add to the Street to Road for All, Mr. Mayor, is there was a big group of people who helped us write that transportation master plan, and a couple of you guys, Council, but also Sheriff Lear, Jim Mitchell, were in the audience. And so I guess if they would have any comments, but we have sent letters out asking for support, and I've got quite a bit of support back in this grant application, so.
Well, returning to this one real quick, do, find out quickly if we could get the permit.
Oh, yeah.
Let's get a timeline, and we can do something, if it's possible, it'd be great. And I do appreciate, you know, the group's help, that's been fantastic, and we've already received a number of letters of support. I know we've sent them to our congressional delegation as well for them to write letters of support. We haven't obviously heard anything from them, but. You know, come on, what are their priorities? It's local community, forget Iran. Any other questions about this application?
It's two thirds.
Yeah, we need to approve. Okay.
I move that we approve the submittal of a grant application to the Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Program for Corridor Improvements along the US one ninety-one Pine Street in a total grant request of four million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, with an eighty percent federal request and a twenty percent local match.
Second.
All right, removed by Councilman Casiba, second by Councilwoman Voice, to approve the submittal of the grant application to the Safe Streets and Roads for All Federal Program for improvements along US one ninety-one Pine Street in a total grant request of four point, or four million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, with an eighty percent federal request, twenty percent local match. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries five zero. It's our hail mary, let's see if it works. Right? Get it all done in one package, that'd be fantastic. All right, next item are department reports. First up is municipal court, that's there. Right? Next is G two, Animal Control Municipal Code Enforcement. A lot of orange cats around town nowadays, just up my eye.
It's strong.
It's strong. I mean, all five Mike Bittens are orange, genetically, it's like, it's supposed to be kind of difficult, so. There is one nasty cat wandering around, and he comes and shows up, okay, so. Uh, G three, Project Public Works, well, Public Works. Abe, you wanna, I'm a council, if you have any questions, and then Abe will highlight what is most pressing on his mind here.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions, just, there is a lot of construction going on. I think one of the biggest balances right now is the town trying to manage cash availability and building on builds, something Maureen and myself are working hard to make sure we do well. I like to spend it a little faster than they seem to get it back, and so, yeah, but we are working hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. The, we did get a NEPA approval on the Pet Safety Project, so Jordanson is working towards getting the ninety-five percent specs pulled together so we can make our formal submittals wide up. Our Dura is in a similar location, we don't quite have NEPA approved, but we are pushing to have that ninety-five percent submittal done by the end of this week, so that we can qualify for a patent that we are aiming to apply for for the year. The shallow water main project, the water main is basically complete minus the final tie-in on the very southwest corner, which we are waiting for. It's gonna be a very large shutdown, and we're not even confident we can get it shut down. We have to turn something like ten or twelve valves, so there's just not a lot of valves in South, Southwest, so. If we can't get it off in those ten or twelve valves, what's gonna end up being is town taking the entire quadrant, southwest quadrant out.
For how long?
A day. But then you're talking boil order, notification to every property owner, PTs, that's a big deal. I think right now, we have a huge shutdown as far as the number of people, but the number of valves, I think will take about twenty people down, if we do it. So we're trying to convert everybody, we're going back and trying to convert all the courts and jade onto the new line, and then when we make the tie-in, obviously those guys are going down no matter what, but that way, when we get done, it's one final flex, and it should be live. The complicated time.
I've heard good things from residents of the neighborhood, so are you, would you concur?
I would, yeah. I'd probably have been the one that's had more issues than most, and I'm, even that hasn't been.
I wasn't gonna say that.
Bad, well, yeah.
Courts have been a struggle because the groundwater saturated that trench so much, keeping that road smooth has been a problem. We are requesting Westwood to give us the cost on doing some fabric on our paid backs, so I don't have those numbers yet, but we are requesting it so we know what our options may be, the deal that's saturated, so.
Interesting.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Pierceman, you go to do that shut up if you coordinate with me, we can do some messaging with our master application system.
Yeah, that'd be good. We're hoping it goes smooth, but we've had valves in the past that just don't turn on, so.
Yep.
If that happens.
I discovered one. Bravo, golden that we leased.
Yeah. Like, we'll do our best to manage that, maintain it as best as possible, but they will be, service lines is gonna take a couple of weeks, so if anybody asks council members, we have been asked by a couple of people, everybody is getting a new meter pit, which is the thaw pit, that thaw it back out towards the street, so their service line will be complete. If people allow us to reach into their property line, we will make sure that we put a new full port coupling on their service line back to the curb stop. The curb stop and meter pit are gonna be right on the property line, it's not over ten feet inside of private property. If an individual doesn't want us to dig through their fence or across their yard, we will just tell them that you now own that curb stop. We don't know if it's full port, we don't know if you're gonna be able to thaw through it, that's at their risk. The town is willing to pay for it until backfill begins. Once backfill begins, we missed their opportunity, and they now own that part of the infrastructure just like anything else. So that's something that Ansel and Barazza will be going around and communicating with those property owners as we go through the project, so. But they will be able, if they have a freeze-up in the future, they should be able to thaw it from the pit outward with a steamer, should be quite easy, so. It will require us to come back in the fall or winter and move people's meter pits from inside their house out to the pit, or move their meters from inside the house to the pits, and then fix their interior plumbing, which is something we will do later this year outside of the project. The airport, that project's going.
Question. I've had a question from someone as to why the sewer line wasn't put in while they have everything torn up already.
Oh, sewer line's coming. It's a sequencing issue of what crews they have available and the challenges they have in front of them. So right now, they're focused on getting the water line complete, and then they'll come back and do the sewer line.
So all the digging happens again. And then, do you have an estimate for beginning-ish timeline for paving?
No, but, like, if all goes well, I would think the end of July, if I were to get my crystal ball out, so, end of July or August.
And that's hopeful, that just gives a vague idea for people, so.
Yeah, I think they have about two weeks of service lines to get done. They're down to one crew, and so they were hoping to run two crews at the same time and whip out all of the mains, but the groundwater on the courts was more than they bargained for, and they were crawling over on the courts. Everything went really smooth, except for about the first hundred and fifty feet on courts, that was brutal, so. My guess is two weeks, those service lines, followed by a sewer will be no more than two weeks, and then they'll be shaping the roads up for pavement, if you might guess. Out at the airport, that project's actually went very smooth, the two oh nine is down, and the compaction went really well. They did their test strip for pavement on Friday, unfortunately, it did fail, so they had to remove that, recalibrate their mix design, and I think they were hoping to get it down today. Wes, did they get a test strip down today, or is it tomorrow that they're doing the test strip?
He'll.
Okay. Anyway, we were hoping to be paid back by Wednesday this week, that's gonna get pushed back a little bit, but we're on schedule out there, and everything's going pretty smoothly. If I can figure out where all the grant monies and amendments and all of that, that's a paperwork nightmare, and I've asked Wes and his team to help figure out, because the FAA has shifted money so many times into different pools and pots. Other than that, I don't have much else to report. I did add, a bunch of the products that we have ongoing into the reports, first time you guys have seen a couple of them, with their budgets more red, cost-wise, but overall I think construction is doing, all things considered, pretty smooth.
Any questions for Public Works? Excellent. Right? Public Works includes the waste fire, well, our waste fire, just my mind, so.
Did someone hit that fire hydrant? Is that why it was leaning?
We had to get hit this year.
And this was one of them, I take it?
Do we know through him?
Typically, in both instances, the hydrants are not failing the way they should. A hydrant repair should be a couple hours, because they're, they're designed to fail right at the traffic lane, so when you hit one, it should just break off. These ones both have knocked, and we've had to dig down one all the way to the shoe, one half the way down, and get them repaired.
I'm assuming it breaks off, we get the geyser in.
No.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's just.
Can we know?
The main that those work is the valve is right at the bottom of the shoe, or right at the top of the shoe of the hydrant, so there's actually a rod inside, and everything right at traffic level is designed to break off, so that that valve doesn't turn or anything. I mean, obviously, a little bit could leak through, but you're not gonna have a full-on geyser, so.
That's horrible.
Doesn't quite work at that time. Well, a couple have, but these ones have shaken up.
I mean, did he, and that's been like fairly recently, or has that happened over the[1786.14] I mean, did he, and that's been like fairly recently or does that happen over the winter? I don't care.
Uh, no, they've both been in the spring.
Okay.
And one of them, we noticed it within probably twelve hours of it happening. The other one, I think it was in a few days.
All right. Next on the agenda, so that's Public Works. Planning and zoning. Any questions on planning and zoning? All right, next up is the airport report.
Mr. Mayor, slightly different report. You guys are used to seeing, this is uh the revenue report you guys kind of discussed. Um. Riley and the airport board did not have a meeting this month, so I don't have this standard report, but this is an update on kind of fuel sales and services through the year, including revenue projections. I think they got those through.
Maybe May, let me actually look.
Through April. It just takes us a little time, has to catch up with uploading it into Cosell, all the credit cards and different things, so. Uh, if you, I mean, Jets' fuel sales are forty, forty-seven percent increase year-over-year.
So are we beginning, I'm sorry, so is this monthly report that I'm reading, is that beginning in July or is that like?
July, January. July, okay.
Abe, I'm not sure which one you pulled, but we're current through May at this point.
Uh, I just didn't have the time to go through Cosell, Maureen, I didn't, when I pulled the report last month or last week. And go through all the revenue numbers. I got it all over very easy. Fuel sales, I, you, the way you were posing is beautiful. I just didn't have time to get to Cosell again.
Just ask me this time and I'll run it for you.
Oh, I see.
I really appreciate y'all putting these in. These are really, they're really helpful to see just year-over-year progress on sales and FBO operations.
Everything's up.
Yeah.
Everything's up. Okay, any other questions about the airport? Yeah, it's for Port's question.
So where you're at with your sales guys through May, um, on ordinary revenues, which is your administrative revenues, land use, et cetera. You're at a hundred and forty-five percent of your budget, so a year-to-date actual through May thirty-first of a hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. And on your FBO services, fuel sales and hangar space, through May, you are at ninety-two point four percent, which is a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-five. And then grant revenue, eh, forget about worrying about that because it's just, you know, as we discussed, we got to get some calculating done there. But it's silly, but it was super, super good year so far.
Yep. Fantastic. All right, next item is the travel and tourism commission.
Yeah, that, that first one, it's up. Yeah. Yep, yeah, we ended up um up year-over-year, so.
That's good.
And we approved a couple of the contracts and then consented agenda as well.
Okay, right. We did have, you're my first move, so.
Yeah, I was gonna just, I was just gonna thank Jim Hamilton for his time on the uh commission.
Exactly.
We are yet to uh appoint another, or have, I guess, for your approval.
Yeah, so anybody who's interested, let me know. All right, I think that's it. So next item on the agenda is our public hearing. I would just announce a public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-six annual budget appropriation. This is ordinance seven thirty on its final read. Questions, comments? There's a fourth one, Brian. What was the fourth one? It wasn't suggestions.
We'll find it. This is your spot, Mr. Slaughter.
It is. This is where we have to increase it. Eighty thousand for the, uh, we do have to increase, we have to increase it to the, um. Public Works, sorry, right? No, 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 into the, um, sorry. Street operations, sorry. So instead of six thirty-one, it's street seven eleven?
It's eighty even.
Yes. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, where were you at that you were adding to at?
Total street operations, fund ten, six hundred and thirty-one, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents will be increased to eighty thousand because of the additional cost of the chip seal.
Oh, well.
We don't have um a number on that as far as like a, it's in fund ten, it's in the middle of fund ten.
So it's ten, four, thirty-one, ten, ten, but. What number did you say it was going to be, man?
It's eighty thousand on top, so six thirty-one plus eighty is seven eleven.
Abe, how much is the total amount on the chip seal? Cause that's what I'm working on.
He cheated, he just said that, three fifty something.
It's like three fifty and seventy-eight, three fifty.
I can't hear him.
Four thirty.
It was three fifty, it's now four thirty. If I get into the document, I would.
Okay, so I just got into the document and changed it. Okay, so our total now is, on that is six hundred and fifty-one. And then some silly pennies, which we need to round up.
It's fifteen? I feel like. Where are you? See.
I'm down here.
What row? Give me a row upper.
Uh, one sixty, one sixty-two.
Sixty-one. There you are. Yeah, so.
But the motion for the, the motion for the project was four hundred and eleven dollars and something.
Yeah, that's what we bid out, but we still have to pay for the chips and the engineering.
I'm sorry, okay.
So you have chips? Yeah, with payment repair and another twenty thousand, so, right.
Yep, I just added that twenty thousand, so.
Thank you.
Seven eleven.
Yeah, so that will be ten, four, thirty-one, ten, ten. Ten, four, three, one, ten, ten.
Yeah, it's now.
Thought that might happen.
I hope it here. Let me help you look that, actually.
All right, we just have some numbers. Got more to do, right?
Yeah, we got quite a few more to do, Judy.
Yeah, so let's not call it easy yet.
If you all choose to do so. I was trying to help get it balanced, but Abe kept foiling my efforts.
That's, that's the old joke, right?
It is.
Abe's jobs, Abe's jobs to spend it and you're, you're guys to find it.
Okay, anything else on the budget?
Yeah, um, if we start at the very top, I found um some revenue to discuss, so line thirty-five.
Um, can one of you guys share for the?
Uh, yep.
Thank you.
Who's sharing?
Agenda, we don't have the uh.
Uh, it'll have to be you, Maureen.
Okay, give me a second. I'm not very good at this thing yet. Share.
I don't have the detail on here at all.
Yeah.
You got it yet, guys?
Yes.
Yep.
Just need to make it bigger now.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's better, yep. And if you could slide it to the left.
Yep, yep, I'm working it. Okay, so, um.
There you go.
Now you can go to line thirty-five.
I'm ready.
Okay, so on um utility taxes, uh, franchise fees, I upped that by about seven thousand based on this year's actuals so far. Interest, because I was getting so close to a balanced budget, I put this in here. This is a very iffy number, nine thousand, I'm confident, ninety thousand, I'm confident in getting in fund ten. A hundred and twenty is a maybe if we don't end up breaking CDs early to pay for um some of these contracts. So this is, um, Abe and Amy and I are like, you know, really, really, really working hard not to do that, but if we. Uh, so it's your choice whether or not we want to leave that number at the higher figure in the hopes that we are successful, um, or whether we um leave it at the lower number.
Split the difference?
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather higher, but maybe just to be realistic and conservative, we just split the difference.
Okay. Here we go. Um, so that was those two, and then we just had a couple um things in here that we, uh, we needed to, based on, we finally got a quote back from the auditors and the fact that we're going to dip into. Um, the federal audit this year, the federal single audit, we have to increase by five thousand on that. Insurance quotes, uh, the hard quote hasn't come in, but they're pretty close and so we can easily do that switch right there and deduct five thousand from that. Pretty self-explanatory. Then we get down to the chip seal, which of course we know we just added twenty thousand from the second read to the third read in. The mosquito contract, um, that's going to save us six thousand dollars this year based on, again, no hard contract, but the estimates that Matt received. Um, a week or so ago, and pull a little out there.
Please pause for a second, Maureen.
Yep.
Um, yeah, just, I think, I think, I sent the email to council, but there will be no helicopter flying over Pinedale this year. I guess the mosquito district got a lot of phone calls. Strangely enough, I did not. So, uh, they are responding and they will be fogging once a week. And so we're just asking that they would have that as a consistent time that they fog on a consistent day. So Jim will probably be also just coordinating with you a little bit, once we know like fogging every Tuesday at nine o'clock or something like that. And then because they're going to be doing that way, we don't have to pay for bargaining in the parks, um, so it'll be supposedly better because it's safer and yada, yada, yada. They will be spraying outside of town with the helicopter, but not over the town with the helicopter. So that takes the helicopter price out of it, so it is less expensive and supposedly a better response is what everybody's expecting, so.
How does that affect like homes? Uh, because, you know, like.
I know.
They're not fogging in the, my backyard, for instance, you know, so how far does the fogging spread? Is it, are they going down every street?
Yes, they're gonna be driving around town and fogging. I don't have the exact map yet, but that was exactly kind of my. What's that?
It looks like the plague coming down the street.
Yeah, so we'll get instructions, but according, they're not having to use necessarily the same chemical, right? So it's a different chemical. So it's not the one that everybody's been complaining about on the helicopter strain. That certain people have been complaining about on the helicopter strain. It won't be that chemical. We are yet to get a final detailed look of what that would look like, so we'll coordinate with everybody and let everybody know, but.
Okay, when you do, can you let us know?
I've understood it's safer, efficient and less costly.
We'll get hit up, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
So legal modification went out today.
It did not.
For when there's spring. I thought I saw it posted today.
Yeah, it's too many, uh, technicals.
Our website.
And it is.
Seven, seven PM each evening, starting June twenty-fifth through August eleventh, um, Wednesday and Thursday nights at seven PM. Weather permitting.
Wednesday and Thursday nights? And so.
Like a half a town, okay.
I'm grateful that they spray for mosquitoes, although.
Yeah.
Information would be nice, too. Better than it was.
Yep, just, it'll happen this week, cool.
Uh, okay, Jim, why don't you, uh, just for the sake of communication, we'll get you that information, we'll let you put it out there. And then, it just gone out as an email to all the people that are. I thought I signed up for that, I didn't. All right, I'll be gone. That I might open our website to figure out what it is. Is that the map that they're going to find they'll be driving then? Are they going to drive all the streets?
Yes.
Okay. How many miles is he gonna be doing like this? A lot of miles.
They're not doing every street every week, are they?
Yeah, there's some.
Yeah, but when?
Like Wednesdays and Thursdays, is what they're saying.
Are, are they, are those areas?
Take place every Wednesday and Thursday starting at seven, until a week of August eleventh, beginning at seven PM each evening.
But I mean, are they covering the entire town each week?
Yes, they will drive the entire town each week.
There will be no mosquitoes.
I feel like we're gonna get more complaints about that than.
We will. Cause I can see it. That's why we'll have that information on what chemicals, those people will.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I hope it works.
I got calls and texts myself over the weekend and like, call the town hall on Monday, people.
Well, for what it's worth, can you just get that information for a moment? I think we should post this on the website as well. This, this is what they're saying. Yes, please close the windows. Don't, don't worry about closing your windows. I don't know. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I feel like the mayor should know these things, but I'm being informed of it as we go, but we're only talking about the mosquito budgets. Okay. All right, back to the budget.
Okay, so, um, additionally, um. The sage and snow contract was probably somewhere else in the parks budget. Um, I'm not sure exactly, but I have called it out here. I think in the past it had been under um trees slash maintenance, but um just to ensure that we had it, I went ahead and put it up here in this one. So Abe, I don't know, can we reduce this um trees and maintenance budget to account for that or not? Abe? Can't hear you. So, I'm not sure that you guys had sage and snow, because there was no note down here in line one ninety-seven, which is trees and maintenance, total of sixteen thousand. So did we have it included in there or did I need to include it or not?
It, it is in there, I believe.
It is? Marvelous.
Yep.
Okay, um, thank you. Sorry, I have random.
Or I kind of like that, but.
Sorry, I have random thoughts about the budget all weekend, you know, the last, before the last read, so, um, let's see. Don't think we have any other changes going on in fund ten. That was it. Then the last one I had is going to line three fifty-seven at the airport. Um, based on actual quotes, which I believe you approved earlier, we needed to add five hundred and thirty-nine dollars to the insurance. No big deal. Those are my only changes since second read that I have to propose to you. Not too bad, Judy.
Okay. All right, just. Other questions, comments? No. Councilman.
Just looking.
May I remind you, we did not get guitar participants.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we agreed to do it, so we just have to take that into the next fiscal year.
Yep.
Where's that going to go?
It's not in this budget.
Well, you better put it in there. You're the one that wanted a car.
You can play me.
No, uh, there's twenty-five thousand that we need to add. It wasn't spent in this fiscal year, but will be spent in the next fiscal year, so. That's gonna be a, uh.
It's twenty-five thousand is all a car is?
Hopefully, less, right Abe?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, in man, same car.
So that's coming up.
Good question, yes.
Hey, it just got added to line eighty-two.
Eighty-two?
Yes.
Yep, okay, great. Thank you. Token in the same line.
Sorry. I was faster.
I had it in there, you deleted it. There.
Okay. Fine.
Uh, just so we know, all right, any other questions, comments? Any questions from citizens, there? On citizens, you're allowed to ask questions as well. Hearing none. We move to the third read of ordinance 730. Yes, Councilwoman is finding everything, she's got everything noted down.
Not neatly, though, we'll see how this goes.
Following it, Maureen?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, I move that we approve ordinance 730 on third read and annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026, with the following changes. The fund 10 dash 340 dash 4350 will now be 82,000. 10 dash 360 dash 6100 will now be 105,000. 10 dash 410 dash 0195 will now be 35,000. 10 dash 410 dash 5030 will now be 25,000. 10 dash 431 dash 1010 becomes 430,000. 10 dash 441 dash 1330 is now 30,000. Line 174 total street expenses is now 651,382 dollars and 68 cents. Line 174 total mosquito, um, is now 30,000. 10 dash 452 dash 0480 is now 5,325.
Hang on, what number, what number did you just say?
That might be wrong, 10 dash 452 dash 0480. That's the, the garden
We, we got rid of that, thank you.
It's in the, it's in a lower
It's included in another line.
Included.
Okay.
No change in that department.
Okay. Um, and then 31 dash 410 dash 0035 is now 12,539. And
Say that number again for me, Judy, I'm sorry.
31, 410, 35.
Okay, sorry, I have a hard time hearing you sometimes.
I think you missed, um, did you get 410 dash 0250? That drops from to 135, was 140, goes to 135.
Okay. So sad. I wrote it down instead of trying to
No, it's great.
Follow it there.
Thank you for doing that. That can be emotional.
Do I have everything?
Matt was, was the one you just asked her to correct?
Uh, line, row 61, 10 dash 410 dash 0250, that's the, uh, insurance we dropped, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't hear her call it out, so.
I didn't either, so thank you.
Hey, I think that's it. So moved, is there a second?
One second.
All right. Moved by Councilwoman Voice and seconded by Councilman Swafford to approve ordinance 730 on its third and final read, our annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm assuming Councilwoman Loftus is saying, yeah, aye as well, can't see him, but
I see it, I see it.
All right. And those opposed, not opposed, so that motion carries 5-0. Done.
Did it, team.
Thank you, Amy, Maureen, Abe, everybody for your hard work on getting that done. That's a lot of work. Appreciate it.
For sure.
Yep, once again, good job, staff. All right, next item on our agenda is ordinance 731. On second read, this is the amended appropriation ordinance for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
You guys see my screen still?
Mm-hmm, sure, it's a little small, but
Yeah.
Okay, whoops, hang on, gonna blow it up here. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Special moving or something.
So we had just a couple little changes for second read here, and hopefully this will be the end of it. And none in third read. I'm finding them here. Okay, if you go to line 30 down here uh, on travel and tourism. We decree, um, website development by 10,000 down to 26 because we're going to spend it somewhere else. And then we increased on line 310, uh, travel for events and meetings, 6,000. And that's just because I booked a bunch of stuff for next year last week, which you'll see in the payments. So, um, so that would have put me over budget, but I went ahead and did all the travel bookings for upcoming fiscal year last week. And then we, uh, moved some, uh, salaries, um, based on the amount of time being spent this year out of some of the other funds and in of my time into travel and tourism here for this 4,000. As you know, I've been having a lot of fun with the website stuff. So then
What you call fun?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, then airport, um, we had a little bit of overage on this miscellaneous, just a few things that, um, we hadn't planned for elsewhere in the budget. So we're going to have to up that by 1746. That specifically was the pancake breakfast for the fly-in got coded to miscellaneous. And I think there were some repairs made to the house, which we had previously not had any budget for. So just a little bit there, plus an error in the formula that we needed to resolve at the same time. But that 1746, we spent less on gas, so you see the reduction here to give us back to the zero. And that would be it.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Anything for the discussion? So we can go ahead and pass ordinance 731 on its second read as amended according to the budget sheet that we have here. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll tell you. I move, uh, that we approve ordinance 731 on second read in order to the town of Pinedale, state of Wyoming, and amended appropriation ordinance for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, reflecting, um, the changes or amendments attached.
Yeah. Been moved? Second. All right, moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Cusiba to approve ordinance 731 on its second read in order to the town of Pinedale, amended appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you. Next item is ordinance seven, oh, I'm sorry, resolution 2025 dash 09. This is our resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the federal funding for safe streets and roads for all program that we just approved. Can you pass a resolution? Anyone?
I move that we approve resolution 2025 dash 09. Resolution authorizing the submission of an application for federal funding through the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation for the town of Pinedale, for the purposes of the town of Pinedale, U.S. 191 Pine Street Complete Street Safety Improvement Project.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Voice and second by Councilman Swafford, I'll give to you. Approved resolution 2025 dash 09, resolution authorizing submission of application for safe streets and roads for all program. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. You're getting good at this, Dean.
Two thumbs up.
All right, we need to get it so he can have his voice at the next meeting. Okay. All right, next item is resolution 2025 dash 10, a resolution approving a conditional experiment for the animal boarding facility.
Mr. Mayor, you guys approved this last week.
Yep.
By the code, it requires a resolution, so you have a resolution. Take this eight.
I move that we approve resolution 2025 dash 10, resolution approving a conditional use permit for an animal boarding facility slash animal shelter pursuant to chapter 160 dash 22, conditional use permits at Jones Edition Block 2 Lots 1 through 3.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Cusiba, second by Councilwoman Voice to approve resolution 2025 dash 10, the conditional use permit for the animal boarding facility. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, next item are the bills. Councilwoman?
I move that we approve the bills for June 23rd, 2025, in the amount of $535,219.07, paid with checks 31517 through 31560.
Hey. You've been passing the bills like for like how many years now? It's like people in the audio are going to laugh because I always All right, it's been moved to pay the bills for June 23rd, 2025, in the amount of $535,219.07, checks number 31517 to 31560. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next is payroll and benefits for June 30th, 2025.
I move that we approve payroll and benefits for June 30th, 2025.
Second. All right, moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Cusiba to pay payroll and benefits for June 30th, 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And no executive session this evening?
Is that an over-under 75?
What's that?
I mean, so we're under.
All right.
That's why I thought.
All right, can I have a final motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Loftus to adjourn at 6:42. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you much, everybody, for coming. Hi, Dean. Have fun up there.
Hi, ready. Hi, Jim.